Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:01. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Like to thank everyone for coming tonight. At this time, is there a motion to seal our executive session minutes from tonight?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And we did not take any report, uh, any, we did not take any votes tonight in executive session. So now, it is time for one of my favorite parts of tonight's meeting. It is time for our showcase. And Dr. Cummings, I'm going to let you do the first introductions, please.
Excellent. Well, I would like to introduce Chris Fiore, our Narragansett High School principal. And so, Chris is going to talk a little bit about our students and our programs who just did so extremely well at the Skills USA competition last month.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I concur. This is always a great part of the meeting where we can honor students and staff. And so, our students, our CTE students compete in the Skills USA competition and perennially, they've done very well. We have another group of students who we'd like to recognize for their efforts and recognitions along the way. So we have some computer students who are going to be here with Ms. Clapp and Mr. Hers. And they will be coming up momentarily to do a little bit of a robotics demonstration. But for right now, I have Mr. Gartner and some plumbing students that he's going to help us recognize. So I'd like to call up Mr. Gartner.
Thank you, and welcome. I'd like to bring up the students, Darian Price and Ray McConnell. Ray took second place in the plumbing competition and Darian took third overall. They did a great job with a very short period of time to, once we learned what the competition was going to be, they had a short time to get their stuff together and figure it all out, and they did a great job competing. I believe we have a slide presentation coming up. Am I in the way? Oh, I do it. Oh, okay. You want to take over? You said you would. So here's, here's the award ceremony down at the Vets in Providence. That student right there took first. That student actually took first last year as well for Providence. Last, last, last three years. Yeah, they do HVAC, plumbing, and sheet metal. And his goal was to actually take first place in all three over the years. So they did a great job competing against him. He's been there for a while beating and in their school. Here's the setup that when we found out what, that we built at the school. You can see part of it, the two students here, working, practicing for the competition in that specific setup. I'd gone down there and met with the instructor and he showed me the setup and what they were going to be doing and how it was going to be. Came back and I had the students build it up real quick so they could get out there and do that and, and practice. And they, again, they did a great job. I can't say it enough. Here is, so the picture on the right, the top right is down in the Providence school. That's the setups that they had down there. The two pictures, top left, bottom right, that was part of the drainways vent system. So they had to do, it was a bathroom setup, so it was a toilet and a lavatory. They had to do the drain waste, the venting, and the hot and cold water lines for it. In about, what was it, four hours total? Here's all the students, the juniors and the seniors that are in the program this year. Where is? Yeah, yeah, in between, in between them is the other student that competed. Is that it? Okay.
So Eric, could you talk about a couple, or any of you, could you talk about a couple of the skills that you had to use in order to complete the task?
I think that's good for them.
You're actually on TV right now, too, so you don't have to look over there, but if you stay in the microphone, everybody watching from home is going to be able to hear you.
No pressure.
So we had to know how to use a tape measure correctly, and we had to use the code that they gave us. And they also gave us a packet too, with the instructions of how to do it and which things had to be at certain heights. Like in the, in the picture, that structure, the underneath part. So the bottom right picture, on the left, there, there's a, a measurement you had to have that set at, or else it technically wouldn't be able to code and it wouldn't pass inspection. Same with how the P-trap for a sink has to be at a certain height, or else you can't have it in the house, or something like that. But there's just all different sorts of things that you can think of. Like also, if you're... Oh, yeah, cast iron is, you have to do it completely different than other metals, because, well, it's heavier and other things. So our support systems, at first they wanted two, but one did work better because it just, it helped it stay up more than the other way. Because if you had to get two in there, you wouldn't really have a lot more room under there.
Great.
So also, thank you. Also, I think what you were also alluding to is, as you can see down there, they're doing cast iron, which is more of a commercial setup, or larger homes, if you're doing vertical runs, let me get closer to the mic, vertical runs so you don't hear the water rushing through the house. They had to transfer to PVC, which is typical for residential. And then they had to sweat all the copper lines for the water and feed lines. So they had the full gambit commercial with the cast iron that you see mostly there, as well as residential and copper.
We'd like to ask the students a couple of questions, if that's all right. So I, I have the same question. I'd like to hear from both of you. First, can you tell me what grade you're in? Right, thank you. And then my question is, can you each share something either that was really, really hard, or something that was like cool and awesome, like you were like, it was really cool to learn that? So either something that was really hard, or like, holy cow, this was awesome. I really enjoyed that.
So during the event, they actually kept changing one of the requirements on us, which that was, was hard for me. Yeah, they changed it about three times.
Thank you. How about you? What, what did you either, in, either in the competition or just in your courses that you've had or your experience, what either was really, really hard for you, or what did you like really, really enjoy doing?
One thing that was hard in the competition for me was the hanger and getting, like, holding it up and setting up the hanger at the same time. Because a lot, a lot of the time, in Mr. Gartner's shop, there's things that you can like help hoist you up. But in that situation, you only have the things that are around you and yourself. There's no help, anything. And then one thing I can say that I enjoy about it is soldering. It's a lot of fun and you get to, you get to work with heat and you got to be really careful and it's good to think about because it's really fun also.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, hang up there, hang out in case other school committee members have questions. Diane?
Yeah, I'm just curious, are you both going to be continuing on in the apprenticeship program after graduation?
I plan on becoming an apprentice after I graduate. And then next year, since I missed the application, I plan on testing into the Union at Local 51 in East Providence.
I do not plan on continuing in this. Oh, I'm planning on going four years of active duty.
Oh, what service?
Army. I'm a volunteer for Army Rangers.
Oh, congratulations. Great. Are there questions or comments?
Well, I just want to say a real big congratulations to both of you. Is it Raymond or Ray? And Darian for this prestigious honor. You know, I, I can only imagine how much work goes into this, but to really see it come to life through the photos and through your personal experiences is really just enlightening to us and really appreciate you for being here and sharing your stories with us. And really, I think this just speaks volumes to just the kind of opportunities that the Narragansett Public Schools has to offer and really appreciate you both for being here to share this story with us.
I just have one quick comment. The week that Lauren sent the information over about, about you all doing so well in the contest, a plumber happened to be at my house one of those days. So I read the description of what you, all the skills that you had done that Lauren sent us, and he was very impressed. And he was also very impressed that our high school had the plumbing program. So kudos to you all.
Any other comments or questions from the school committee? I want to thank you both for coming tonight and you as well. You're both very well spoken. This was really interesting and we really appreciate you taking the time to come tonight to share that with us. It's much more interesting instead of reading about it like only in the packet. So thank you for taking the time to come tonight. Congratulations on, you know, graduating and good luck with next year.
So next we have Chris Hers and Megan Clapp, our two computer science teachers. And they are going to showcase a bit of what they were doing for Skills USA and tell you a little bit about the program.
So Chris and Megan, thank you for being here.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for being late. We were having a little pizza party at the school and lost track of time. It's always a pleasure to come here with my students and have them demonstrate all of the really cool things they do. And I especially wanted to thank you for finding the funding so that they're able to go to Nationals. This is going to be an adventure and of a lifetime. So thank you very much. So I'd like to introduce the silver and gold winners of the robotics competition. So if you guys would come up. After I introduce, or actually, once I announce the winners here, they're going to just do a little demonstration of their robots and talk about all of the things that they had to do to get to where they are now. So winners of the silver are Avery Shealy and Zach Steele. And winners of the gold are Anthony Insana and Juan Rivera. So if you guys would like to do a little demonstration? Oh, and this is Meg Clapp. She's fantastic.
Before we demonstrate, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the robot and what it does, and how we got to this point. When we started the year, we only had one of them. Second one started a little bit later. And the whole aim of the game is to get, some of these down from your side, across, and into the goal on the opposite side of the field. It's kind of like soccer with robots, except there's a giant bar in the middle that stops you from getting over 90% of the field. So there are some of these balls already around on the field, but the vast majority of them are kept in a box next to you. You drop them into the field off your robot, they have to touch it at some point, and then you can push them around, try and get them into the enemy goal. And only one of your robots can be on the opposite side at any given time. So we've iterated a couple of different ways to get down towards that goal. We started with more of a flat, boxy design, but it didn't do too well. So we scrapped that, turned it into more of almost like a moving ramp, but that didn't push them too well. So eventually, thanks to the, what we learned at our various competitions, we were able to get around to. We've iterated towards, you can see both our robots have kind of flywheel designs on the top that allow us to launch balls, and we have pneumatics on ours. Thank you again for paying for that. That allow us to push pretty well. I don't remember what I came up to say. Sorry. Oh, demonstrate, yeah. We can do that. So, like I said, ours has pneumatics. Theirs is more mechanically driven. If you guys want to start yours up as well. I can show you. Moves around. You come in and out. See, ours, you know, it shoots, and that allows us to get them over the bar. The bar is kind of elevated, and then it drops back down.
Oh, you got it. Oh, good job.
There is a limit on how many motors you can have at any given time. That's why ours have some weird design choices, like you can see theirs with the two wheels down, but only one motor powering it, so they can have them elsewhere. Our competition was pretty good, other than the fact that it was kind of far away. Most of the competition, they don't host any of the competitions in Rhode Island, so average is about two hours, pushing it, average is about two hours away. Thanks to the competitions, like I said, we were able to iterate. We did pretty well. Obviously, we won. Yeah, I think that's...
Yeah, so we, our wheel on the top originally only had two motors, but we ended up having too many motors, so that was a big problem for us. And we had to come up with a way to make it only one, so we could have all of our other designs. That worked really well. So we had Anthony, thank you Anthony, help us design this little gearbox on top that makes it so we can only have one motor. And it helped us get second place in the competition, so, yeah.
I have, I have some questions I wanted to ask. So my first question is going to be, what grade are each of you in?
I'm a junior, so hopefully I'll be back here next year.
I'm a senior, and I won't be back here next year, but I'll be at WPI, so that'll be fun.
Oh, excellent, congratulations.
I'm a freshman, so.
I'm also a junior.
All right. And then here's my silly question, and then I have a serious question. Did you guys name the robots? Do they have names? If you want to share, you don't have to share.
Ours is 1159, because everything was done last minute.
Like that?
We just named ours Bob.
All right, okay. And then my last question is, I'd like to hear from each of you if you want, but can you tell me what class or classes do you think helped you the most to figure out whatever the coding or whatever the stuff, like, so when you think about the classes, and maybe not fair for the freshmen, you know, because maybe you haven't, but is there any, is there any class that you've taken at the high school that you think has really kind of helped you the most to get to where you are today with your skill set?
I'm taking APCSA, which is a computer science course that teaches us Java, and a lot of the coding, a lot of important coding, building blocks that you use, not actual building blocks, my teacher would be mad if I used building blocks, but you, a lot of the core foundations of it, I learned a lot from Java, like loops, to make sure that a process would repeat until we terminated, or just basic functions to make our code look nicer. Because when we went to the Skills USA competition, we had to like present all our code to them in like a very easy-to-read format. And the more professional your code looked, the better it turned out. So all I've learned from Java has helped a lot with making sure the code, even though it's like in a different language, we were still able to, I was still able to use a lot of it when coding the robot.
Thank you for sharing that. And what do you want to, do you know what you want to study next year in college?
Oh, I want to study computer science and electrical engineering.
Excellent, thank you. And if the others, if you don't want to share, it's okay, but are there any other classes at the high school that you think have helped you improve your skills in this area?
Well, I also take APCSA with Juan. And it's really, you know, we learn Java in APCSA, but it's also, Java is also just kind of the medium to learn computer science concepts. And it's been really great to be able to learn those and then transfer them over to these competitions. These aren't written in Java, but the same concepts, the same computer science concepts that we learn in these classes also transfer over to these very well and help us win.
That's amazing. So you're a freshman, you're taking the AP coding class? Good for you. That's fantastic. Wonderful.
The only thing I'll remind the committee is, this is the very first time we've competed in this competition, both for our mechanical trades in plumbing and for robotics and computer science. So to go into the competition blind and play so highly is really credit to both programs.
Do any other school committee members have any questions or comments?
Well, I just want to say, you know, once again, congratulations on this prestigious recognition. I can only imagine how much work went into this. So thank you for coming and educating the school committee on just how, you know, just all of the many different things that were involved into this program, and you've really set the bar high. So, you know, I'm really looking forward to hearing about how your competition goes, and I'm really happy that you have the opportunity to go, and I wish you all the best of luck as you represent Narragansett.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Diane?
I just have a question. Does the, do you do the coding first, or do you build the robot first and then code the robot? It's kind of a chicken and egg question.
Generally, we build the robot first, and then we put all the code to it, and then at the very end, we add autonomous code, since one section is driver, one section is the code running by itself. And then once we go to a competition, we kind of see what other people do, and if something doesn't work, we try to adapt, make changes, and then we rebuild, and then we re-code, and then we do everything all over again.
Well, I was really impressed how Bob retrieved the ball and came over and dropped it, and it made me think I wish I could get my dog to do that.
So I want to thank you all for coming. I want to thank the teachers for coming, and thank you for letting the students do all of the talking and sharing. What we'd like to do is take a brief recess of our meeting, and we would love to gather the students that are here for a picture, and we have a little something that we'd like to give the students as well. So we're going to pause the meeting, do the picture, hand you something, and then you're welcome to go home and do your homework and stuff like that, but we really want to, Lauren, I'm going to pause the meeting, and then we'll do that? Okay, wonderful. You all set?
Yes.
Are we all set to get back? Okay. All right, we are going to resume our meeting and it's now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, we are moving on to oral reports. And we will start with the schools and we'll keep things sequential and predictable. So let's do elementary, then middle, then high school, then special services. Maybe next time, Alyssa, we'll swap everything and go backwards. But we'll go ele- elementary first. Hello, Ms. Wilson.
Hello, everybody. Nice to see you. I'm going to try doing it on my phone today, see how this works. I'm happy to let you know that we had a transition committee meeting primarily to talk about our transition from elementary to middle school. We've begun some of that process with our students based on feedback. We've been working on ways to make sure that both parents and students are ready for that, that, that big move. And so some of the things that we've been doing, based on the conversations and feedback at the fourth grade level, were mix the kids up during cafeteria time. Traditionally, they were sitting with their classes and now they've gotten a chance to mix it up with all their peers, which has been pretty successful. We've allowed them to not be escorted from class to class with their teacher. We're kind of letting them go into the hallways. Of course, we are monitoring them, but they don't necessarily know that. And the, the, the specials teachers are out in the hallway, like middle school would be waiting for them, kind of thing. So that's been working nicely. We're exposing them to what the grades mean, like an A, B, C, D. Also, and with numerical grades, we've started to talk to them about that and what, what does that mean? Because some of the feedback was is that they weren't used to getting grades like that. So we've started having those conversations with them. And after RICAS, we're going to start some maybe projects with switching classes. So they'll get to roam amongst three teachers and get to go to different classrooms. So they get the understanding of how to move between class to class and bring materials with them and bring them back and, and things like that. We have set up a time for parents that are going to meet with Colleen at the middle school. We're starting earlier than typical. Usually we wait till June to do this. We're actually doing it on the 29th of April. So that would be nice. And there's going to be a presentation and a tour and some questions and answers. And we're also going to have guidance come from the middle school to our school to meet with each individual class, which we've done in the past. We did that during COVID. But we eliminated that and just did the school tour. We're backing it up again. And so they'll have a visit from guidance and then they'll do their school tour later in June. So they'll have two opportunities for question and answers. One is before you get there and one is while you're there. And then we'll also talk about in the summer, having that orientation with them. And Colleen will talk about that a little bit. And we also know that the PowerPoint will be a little bit more comprehensive based on feedback that we've gotten from that committee. So Colleen and I have been collaborating on that a little bit. And what also came out of that meeting was a request for like what to expect when you're expecting going to your next grade. So right now, each of our grade levels is presenting a pamphlet that we'll be putting in our report cards at the end of the year. So if you're going to second grade and you're a first grader, you'll get that pamphlet, what to expect when going to fir- second grade. And so our teachers are working on that right now. And, and they'll be doing that at the middle school as well. So we've started to work on that as part of our transition process, thinking hopefully that'll make people feel a little bit more comfortable about what to expect. For RICAS students, we have one person doing one makeup for the ELA. It's almost done. And we'll be doing our math RICAS on May 7th and 9th. Field trips have begun happening and being planned. And so parents should be on the lookout for a variety of field trips coming up per grade level. And some of our upcoming events, we have a lot in May. We have, actually, the next one coming up is a choral showcase where grade four students will be going to show their talents on April 26th in a little competition for chorus. Not many elementary schools compete, but ours did last year and they had a blast. So we're going to send them again this year. We have our PTO pizza picnic on May 2nd. It's our outdoor picnic for families. The tomogog, we finally did get a presentation on the, on the books. The tomogog museum will be coming to our school with a storyteller and some background about the Narragansett tribe. And that's going to be preschool through fourth grade and that should be happening. We have our art show, which we're very excited about as well, on May 16th. Every student will have a showcase piece and it's going to look amazing. It's going to be like a gallery walk through the hallways in the school. So we'll see, it's just a different change of what we've done in the past. And we have our spring concert on May 30th at seven. And families will be treated to both a choral and a band presentation. And last but not least, we have young athletes. I think it was two years ago or one year ago, Patty Carisato, one of our preschool teachers, who's very connected to Special Olympics, brought in a young athletes program where it's an inclusion program for the preschoolers to participate in kind of a, a, a Olympic game. It's more like a obstacle course. But they do it and they get little medals and they get shirts and the third grade buddies support them. So in third grade, they get matched with some students and they participate in helping the kids learn the obstacle course and learn how to play and share and work together as teams. And this year, our school has been invited to participate in the opening ceremonies at URI for you, the Olympics, Special Olympics, on May 31st. And also to be there to kind of showcase the obstacle course. So both parents and families have been invited to attend that. And then our actual program will be June 7th. So that will be at school for all the kids. But the families and kids that want to attend could go to URI and be part of that. That's all I have to share for now.
That sounds great. Thank you. Any questions or comments for the elementary school?
Just really excited to hear about these pamphlets on the transition between the grades and, you know, how, how everyone at the elementary school and middle school is, you know, working to address that concern and to make that transition from one grade easier for, it sounds like, students and parents, so.
Yeah, we've typically done it on the back to school night that there's a lot of, it's a lot more comprehensive on back to school night where it goes heavy, more heavily into the curriculum and things like that. But it's just kind of little nuances of, of kind of things you can talk to your kids about. And now that you're a big kid going into second grade, this is what you get to do and, and those things. So, yeah.
Excellent.
It'll be nice.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. All right, on to the peer school.
All right, so I have actually kind of a plethora of things tonight. So I'll kind of start off with the academics. Seem similar to Lisa, we started our RICAS testing. We've been so proud of our students. They have really put in a vast amount of effort into testing in the ELA, which was last week, and, and working on one more makeup as well, as well as RICAS math coming up. And then our NJSA testing beginning soon. Our teachers are continuing, continuing to prep our students for, for the testing. But we do feel they are very well ready and well prepared for our testing. And our National Junior Honor Society letters went out recently, accepting our students. And the ceremony is going to be held on May 16th, so we're really excited for that. It's always a fantastic night, recognizing many of our students, those returning and those who are new to NJHS. And then to kind of piggyback a little bit on what Lisa was talking about in regards to the transition. I know she mentioned a lot of the things that I'm going to mention here too, so bear with me. I might repeat a few things. But, you know, it was actually my first day back, I joined that transition, one of the transition meetings with parents. And there was a school committee, there was community members, teachers, and, and a lot of people involved in that transition meeting. So we're trying to take as much of the feedback, you know, that we can as possible to really make this transition, you know, as smooth as possible, which, you know, we are starting, like Lisa said, with our meeting on Monday, to have parents come to the building, be able to meet myself, Ms. Mezzanati, our guidance counselor, will be there. Emily Chardiere, the dean of students, will be there. We'll be able to introduce ourselves to students. Our SRO actually may be there too, to kind of make that connection. And so that, that again will be on Monday where we'll talk through some of the basics. But that will expand on a little further and some of the other pieces, like, like Lisa was stating. The welcome to guides, kind of welcome to fifth grade guide from our teachers. We are working on them as a school now. Lisa and I had that great conversation of, okay, this is great for the fifth grade, but why not do it for all the grade levels? So we're working on those and kind of working on the format. Ours will look a little bit different than elementary school. They'll be grade level appropriate and, and working on those. We're working on expanding some communications after Monday to make sure our parents who are fourth grade, parents currently, get to see kind of how our communications happen at the middle school. So some of those communications will be sent to them as well. They can kind of hear about the activities, the end of the year events, and just kind of see what they have that they're looking forward to and to get used to some of that communication. Again, our guidance counselor is going to go down to NES in the month of May. And then our students are, sorry, are rising fourth graders. So our next year, fifth grade students will be coming to us in June to get a tour and kind of get a feel for things. They were able to go outside, see what the, you know, kind of play structure is outside and talk about all the fun things. Last year, their biggest takeaway was we get ice cream in the cafeteria. So they get to kind of learn some of the excite, exciting things that are new in the peer school. And, and there's, again, well, in the summer, we'll talk about at the meeting, the schedules that come out, how power school works, how schoology works, what other opportunities are there for learning other than just the Monday meeting, especially in April. You know, a lot of that information will need to refresh and revisit, so. And then in, in August, we will have the orientation for our students so that they can come in, meet their teachers, see where their classrooms are, and really start to understand what the building looks like. Moving on to activities. We just finished up another successful season, if you will, but of the cooking club. So we had the cooking club with a, a community member who did some fun recipes this, this year. She did hummus, a lemon hummus, a vegetable bean pasta soup, let's see, creamy mashed potatoes, quickles or quick pickles, which they did last year. That was a big hit. And then they did actually a smoothie day where they did a bunch of different healthy smoothies and they were able to compare and, and kind of almost like a mini competition of which smoothie was the best. So kids had a lot of fun with that. We were glad to bring it back. Color guard, our color guard performed in Salem on April 6th. They performed in, it's the New England Scholastic Band Association Championships. So they, they performed, they went up a significant, I believe it was 20 points from the beginning of their season until now, which is for a significant achievement for them. And they did, the theme was game on. It was kind of a retro Nintendo theme where they had Mario, Princess Peach, Luigi, and a few other characters. So I hope to share some of those pictures in our next newsletter that goes out. Student council for RICAS, they put together some positive, encouraging sticky notes that they put on the lockers. I also have, I know it's a little silly, but a picture of that as well. It was really nice to see them all lined up on the lockers and kids came in and, and they actually were really excited about them. And there was some trading, like, oh, I like your message better, I like yours. So there was a lot of trading of those, but to kind of give them that encouragement as they started the day, you know, for the testing. March Madness has passed, but we had a great, successful week and, and a couple of events. So we had the spirit week with great participation. And then they have a kind of a friendly competition between the grade levels. And the pep rally ends it that day where we did some activities, a hula hoop relay for each grade level, a knockout game with faculty members, which was a huge hit. They had a lot of fun doing that. And then tug of war. And then we announced the winner, which was eighth grade. And eighth grade was the winner of that spirit week. And then that night, we were able to have the March Madness event, which is always so fun. Popcorn, ice cream, dancing in the cafeteria, crafts. There was a watercolor. Terry Burke, our art teacher, hosted watercolor in one room. We have the basketball game going on, the big screen in the library, outdoor basketball under the lights. So fun, you know, it's, it's always really exciting to see and the kids, the kids really do love it. Like, it, it is an event that I wish I had when I was in middle school. And we had at least 200 students there, so very, very well attended. We had Grupo Andas come in to do their capoeira workshop, which was fantastic. We had it with our eighth graders this year. Last year, we hosted it with seventh and eighth graders. And this year, the workshop was a little bit more focused. It was on a Makalele, which is a stick dance from Bahia. So it was a little bit more involved, that we needed a little more, more room for the students to spread out. But again, that was really a fantastic event and the students participated very well, listened. It was actively engaged, even some students who are not normally engaged in, you know, the, the physical activity of the dance. They were really involved and it was really, really awesome to see. So we're hoping to kind of maybe make that a little bit of a continuous cycle to continue on with seventh and eighth grade, learning about, you know, the broad spectrum of capoeira and then that kind of subset Makalele. Red ribbon week, so that was last October, but we celebrated Red Ribbon Week, providing an opportunity to reinforce, reinforce say no to drugs. They had planted, the students had planted along with our student assistance counselor with some help from another parent in the district. They'd planted tulips outside of our, the front of our building in the shape of a heart. They are now in bloom. So we have another picture with the students in front of them who helped to plant them, coming in the newsletter. But if you have a chance to even just drive by the front of the building, they're beautiful. They bloomed over right before vacation, so that was a nice drive in to see that right out front, in the front of the gymnasium. So that was, that was great to see. Spring intramurals are starting soon. We're offering basketball to fifth and sixth graders, ultimate frisbee to all, volleyball and bowling again. Bowling was a huge hit. They really enjoyed that. Our club tennis team is proving again to be really successful, at least 35 students participating. I was just there the other day watching them and it's a great group. And they've found a really great way to introduce it to people who have never picked up a racket, while also working with students who've done it for quite some time. So that's been awesome. They just had their first match yesterday against women. And then we have 145 student athletes enjoying their spring season. So, you know, we have baseball, softball, unified basketball, which just completed their season 4-0 undefeated for the fourth year in a row. And then our boys and girls track and field, you know, looking forward to six more weeks of competition in Rhode Island.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for the peer school?
I just, you know, I don't think there's any question that I could have had that you didn't already cover in that very thorough report. And just really, just speaks volumes to, you know, the work that you're doing and the leadership going on at the Narragansett, like in all three public schools, I might add. But to just hear about, from like the health and wellness side, just to hear about all these wonderful activities that have returned. March Madness, I can recall being one of my favorite times of year. Was there a dance?
Yeah, in the cafeteria, there was music and dancing. And then they also had the food truck right outside there, so.
Wow, it seems to have really grown since I was in school. So really wonderful to hear that and to hear all of the wonderful physical activities that the students are doing. Either eating healthy, you know, they're getting the social, emotional support. Really just wonderful things all around and just bravo. And I look forward to hearing about, actually, I want to see these tulips myself, so.
They are beautiful.
Any other questions or comments, Diane?
Just one. With all the new transition activities from fourth grade to fifth grade that you and Lisa have been working on, do you have any feedback mechanism or evaluation mechanism in mind to see which ones worked well and which ones need tweaking or?
Definitely. It'll start, you know, obviously within our, our teams, but we want to expand it hopefully to some of the people who are on the committee to kind of look at, yeah, what worked and what didn't? What were some suggestions that maybe could be done better next time? Or, or like you said, really looking at what, what works so we can continue those pieces. Absolutely, yep.
It sounds like it's very well thought out. I think it'd be successful, so I hope it is.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
I have something I want to say. This is like a little bit of a bragging moment for me too, but this was before you came back. But you briefly mentioned the student council. They were actually super helpful for me for my senior project. I basically handed over all of the work to the students and they were able to set up a book drive within their school to collect as many used books as possible. And whichever grade had collected the most, we rewarded them with a little donut party. So the middle schoolers basically completed my senior project for me. But they were super helpful and they, the student council loved it, at least from what Ms. Festa told me. And I've never seen so many kids so excited by donuts. So that was cute too. I just wanted to say that, at least to my knowledge, student council wasn't a thing when I was in middle school or it wasn't, like, talked about a lot. So I thought it was super cute and it was, they were so helpful and I have a senior project because of them. So I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, Ms. Festa has done a fantastic job. She took it over last year. We were able to, I guess it hasn't happened in years and Ms. Festa really took it. And she did it with Ms. Izzy when Ms. Izzy was here, but now it's just Ms. Festa. But she, she is doing a fantastic job. Meetings all the time with students, helping out with little initiatives, like we said, to students in the building. What, like, we, we asked student council, what would help motivate or encourage students when going into RICAS testing? Or what would motivate students to participate in March Madness? And it's really a collaborative effort. Right now, we're working on field day and kind of getting some of the feedback from the students. And then even, you know, mental health awareness month in May, we're utilizing the students. And she's really, really, it, it's a, it's a great, great thing to have at the middle school.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions for the peer school?
I just wanted to shout out to the chorus program because they were at Barrington Middle School for the chor- the Junior Choral Festival. So I got to witness the sixth grade and seventh and eighth grade choruses. They were very, very well behaved. They sounded beautiful. So I can only imagine that was at the hard work of Mr. Simeon. And also, I, you know, I know Mrs. Hamel worked really, really hard at the elementary in that transition. It just such a healthy program and congratulations to them. They did, they did a fabulous job.
Colleen, will you be having the, excuse me, the results of the National History Day in your latest newsletter?
Yes, yep. And I believe it's actually this weekend we'll be getting the results, so, yes.
Did we send some to state?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yep, so I will definitely highlight that and not only report, but will highlight it in parent letter and in our newsletter, for sure. Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
We're hoping for national.
Thank you very much. All right, on to the high school.
Hello again. Lot of excitement in the air. You know it's getting late when you start working on your letter for senior parents with all the end of year activities and things that are about to come pretty quickly. Already at the last week of April, so we're kind of moving along. But I would be excited to announce that Rocha Gesham, who's a junior at the high school, won honorable mention for Senator Jack Reed's 2024 High School Arts Competition. And sophomore Sophia Di Biasso and senior Maggie Taplin also have artwork in the show. And that's going to be showcased at the Warwick Mall. And their artwork will be on display in the central foyer from the 29th to May 5th. And then there's a reception for students, families, like teachers, school officials. And that's on Sunday, the 5th at 6:00 PM at the Warwick Mall. So congratulations to them. It's great to see more of our art students being recognized. Our personal finance students completed a fundraiser in the form of a faculty luncheon toiletry drive and clothes and baby item drive led by Linda McQuade. And our foyer right now is just overrun with all types of baby items and, and toiletry bins and things like that. It's over $1,400 worth of things that were purchased and donated and then all of the other donations that came in. And that's all going to be delivered tomorrow morning to Lucy's Hearth and Welcome Center. And so they will get all of those supplies and, and a special thank you to Dr. Detton for a sizable donation as well. Beginning of April, we had AP week, so we were able to recognize Mr. McCloskey for his dedication and service and all he does for the Narragansett school community. We had PSAT, SAT day and sort of freshman team building day right before the break as well. And I know a lot of the students had a lot of angst when it comes to the testing. But again, they, they got through it with flying colors. The freshmen were able to do a service activity or team building activity of their choice. They, one group went to the Canachia Trail and to the beach and did some cleanup and cleaned up some of the, you know, the, the brush along the trail. And then things across from the beach and the parking lot where they, the town told us they needed some special attention. And then we had academic challenges. We had physical fitness challenges for students, depending on what they wanted to do. Like, some of the teachers came up with Jeopardy games and, what's the other game show? It's the one with Steve. Family Feud, thank you. Yes, it was a, it was a family feud that they came up with. So the teachers did a great job. They did ropes competitions in the, in the gymnasium, which they don't typically get to do freshman year. So there were really some good team building opportunities for them. So we made the most of that opportunity. The, speaking of the arts, The, speaking of the arts, again, the, the music department has really been showcased. Right before the break, we also had the spring band concert, which was phenomenal. It's just so great to see so much skill and talent on display. And they also went to Disney over the break, the band and the chorus students, and they were able to perform. I have some great pictures to share, you know, forthcoming in the newsletter as well. So that was a great opportunity. They, they've been talking about it all week. So that was wonderful for them. We continue to focus on SEL at the high school, though the Wellness Wednesdays continue. Today was trivia with Officer Fitz and there was also yoga with Ms. Dully. So we continue to have opportunities on Wednesdays to build relationships and get students to do things that may or may not be a little bit out of their comfort zone, but certainly to build confidence. Senior year, as I mentioned, winding down, getting a little close to the end. So we're looking forward to all of those culminating activities and opportunities to, to share some nostalgia. The, the seniors have just kind of gotten their cookbook together, which is their last sort of fundraiser to make some money to help offset the costs of some of those end of year activities and the prom. So if anybody's looking for a 50-page full color cookbook that was printed by a, a local company that we were able to, to utilize, those proceeds will go to the senior class. It is $35 and it's everything from breakfast and breads to appetizers and entrees and desserts. It goes right on through. And it's from teachers, students, families, community members. Everybody kind of pitched into that. Athletics is in full swing. Thank God, the leader is starting to cooperate finally. And so this week has been a little bit of a joy for, for our spring athletes. And again, it probably in about three, three to four weeks, that'll be winding down as well. So hopefully we have some, you know, more info to share on that. Some upcoming events, on May 2nd, there's a, a counseling trip to Boston for a college fair. So our juniors are able to kind of go to Boston and have another experience with a college fair. On the 3rd is our junior prom. And then on the 6th begins two weeks of AP exams, which really signals the beginning to the end. Because then after APs, we come back and it's sort of like, you know, a sprint to the finish line. And that's the high school.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for the high school?
Well, it's amazing. It seems like the year just started and now all of a sudden it's coming full circle. Are you enjoying your first year at the high school?
It, it's been very enjoyable, to be honest with you. I really haven't had too much time to worry about things because you're just, you hit the ground running and everybody's been amazing. The support system has been fabulous, from the parents and community members to the students, to the staff and, and my colleagues. Everybody has just made the transition very, very easy for me.
Excellent. Well, I think you're doing a fabulous job and we're very thankful that you're here serving our community. Just a quick question regarding the cookbook. How does one go about acquiring one?
Cash or a check and that could be sent right to the high school and then we will take care of it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Thank you very much. Special services.
Student services.
Student services.
Sorry.
Special Ed, student services.
Special Dr. Denton presenting on student services.
So not part of my report, but I feel like I should clarify a little bit about the, all of the toiletries and household items that are sitting in the lobby. So someone found out that one of my hobbies is extreme couponing. So I got invited to the personal finance class to demonstrate my couponing skills and see how much I could buy with $20. And they were so impressed that they gave me their $250 donation and I turned it into $1,400 worth of products.
Oh, wow.
They've handed me, they've handed me a little bit more, so now I've got more shopping to do. And I loved every minute of it. So if you ever see me at CVS or Walgreens, that's what I'm doing. I'm couponing. So let me share with you that our, I'm so proud of our unified basketball teams at both our middle school and our high school. Mrs. Johnson has shared our middle school team has finished their season. Our high school team did compete this afternoon and their last game is next Tuesday, April 30th. It's a home game at Narragansett High School at 5:00 PM versus Coventry. It is, if you have not been to a game, it is just the most remarkable experience to see the sportsmanship and the teamwork and just the cheering of the fans, the community, the teachers, the families that come together. And it is a pretty awesome event and we should be just so proud of our athletes and our coaches because they've represented us so well. Jill and I have been very busy with IEP meetings and helping the schools with scheduling and thinking about transitions and caseloads for the upcoming year. We're beginning, or actually we're almost done, planning our summer services so that our students will be ready and working on the, the staffing for that. But we also are really involved in giving tours, whether it's Jill with our new incoming preschoolers or myself. I've been doing a lot of tours and even going to other districts. I'm going to South Kingston twice, I think, in the next week to attend IEP meetings and have students come in in shadow and meet with parents, just to make sure that those transitions go well for them. Another passion of mine is providing PD and I have been invited now to provide, I did a series a couple of years ago, Learn and Apply in '45. And I was so impressed that Narragansett teachers give up their planning period to come learn a skill with me. And so I've started that series again this year. And I completed my first one on accommodations before break and had over eight teachers come during their planning period at the high school. And then this week I'm doing one on executive functioning skills. So super excited about that. I know that you're always interested in preschool, so I'll let you know that registration is complete for the '24-'25 school year. We have 69 students who are fully registered. We have all of our deposits in hand. And we have 75 seats, but we have to, by regulations, keep some seats open in case a student were to move in who already had an IEP or we were to have a student who turned three during the next school year that we tested and found eligible for special ed. So that's why we leave a few seats open. Jill and I will be away at the beginning of May. We are attending the National Special Education Law Conference. It's always a great opportunity for us to make sure that we're in full compliance, review our policies and our practices and think about how to best engage our families and our staff in the special education process. And then the final thing I'll share with you is that through the hard work of the high school, Dr. Cummings has been involved, Linda McQuade, our high school math department had, we have had several meetings with the Department of Ed to better understand their secondary regulations and new requirements around math. And we have worked with some vendors through Ed Reports and have designed a math class that will truly meet the needs of all students who may be more impacted by their disability, but still want to strive to be challenged through high level mathematics. And it is, it's, it's actually building up speed and people are now exploring the Narragansett model in, for math in their school districts. So we're really proud of that work and our partnership with Ride for that work. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
What level is the math?
So it's going to be for our ninth to 12th graders whose needs are different than the typical Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II. It gives them a very hands-on approach that has some real life applications, but also uses all of the standards of Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. And so rather than teaching it in segmented courses throughout their high school years, we're using an integrated math approach where the curriculum will spiral and they'll get algebra and geometry skills throughout all four years of high school.
And, and our teachers have designed that along with you?
We're designing it using curriculum materials that have, that are already available. And we're talking about how can we use the curriculum materials that are needed, but make sure we're personalizing it to the entry level of each student.
That sounds really wonderful. Is this a first?
I don't know if it's a first, but it's our way of meeting the requirements from the secondary ed, but feel, still staying committed to the fact that we know some students need a more individualized approach to their education and we want to make sure that we're addressing those needs and not just putting them in a course that may not be aligned directly with, with their entry point.
Melissa's done a really nice job with that. One of the challenges of large scale reform is that it's often painted with a broad brush. And so the requirement from the state is that all students pass Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. This class is kind of taking those standards, taking those three classes, parsing them out in a way that students with some learning differences are able to access that same high level standard, but do it in a way that may be a bit non-traditional and, but still get to the same place. So they've thought really deeply about how to get to that place. And it's been a lot of hard work and a lot of meetings, but she, we got there.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
I just had a question about that. So is the, is it a special educator that teaches that instruction or is it a math interventionist?
So our course is already taught by a certified high school secondary math teacher and a certified secondary special educator. Next year, it will continue to have the co-taught model. But then on the third day, because it's a three-day cycle, on the third day, the math interventionist and the special, the special educator will do an intervention to really pre-teach and reteach the skills of the course.
And just one other follow-up. So I'm assuming that this is all, there, there's no real software that assists with this. This is just teacher-to-student instruction?
So there is a component. McGraw-Hill is the curriculum that we're using and they use Alec. Alec is very closely aligned to secondary math and the math series that we'll be using. So we can use that for diagnostics. We can also use it to provide very, because it's a multi-grade class, provide very individualized pathways for students. But what I think is key to what we did is we not only purchased the integrated textbook series, which is Ed Reports approved, which Ride has really supported, but we also bought a secondary math intervention kit called Number Worlds. That is a very hands-on approach. And we are right now doing some work that actually the textbook company hasn't done yet. We're working with them to design a scope and sequence of how we can integrate intervention into the core instruction and have it work side by side so that students have the readiness skills to access the complex standards of secondary math and be able to progress and actually master and learn that material.
So one of the things, I will just interject really quickly. One of the things that we have found while we have kind of implemented our new schedule has been, gotten really great feedback from students and from teachers, is that for students who are struggling in a class, the opportunity to get some extra help and get some pre-teaching before they kind of encounter a topic, particularly in math, has been really successful. So when you sit down with some students that may have had some challenges in mathematics in the, in the past and you ask them how their math's going and, you know, Melissa knows a lot of these students and I do as well, you know, they are really giving, for the first time in their lives, incredibly positive feedback about their math class because they feel successful. Because they're going in, they are able to see the material, have some exposure to the material before it's kind of presented to them or, or kind of taught in class. And so they go from kind of being the person that was struggling to do the material to one of the leaders in the class where they really like, oh, I know how to do this and really engage in that conversation. So that's one of the successes of how we've arranged time at the high school. Chris and Connor and the department chairs have done a really wonderful job of thinking deeply about how the instructional model can shift to take full advantage of how we're using time. And Melissa's design of the class is really taking advantage of that.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Special thank you to all of our principals and Melissa for being here to share your reports with us.
All right. So we are on to school committee reports. Does anyone have a report to give?
Yes, I'll be as brief as possible. And so the nutrition committee met on April 2nd and all of our principals did a fantastic job in covering that. So I won't even go into the specifics because it was already covered. And then on April 8th and 9th, I attended the very first Rhode Islanders Day in Congress. This was a tremendous opportunity to listen to many national leaders speak on topics that included career and tech education, housing infrastructure and federal investment in the current state of artificial intelligence. And lastly, the annual meeting of the Rhode Island Association of School Committees will be held at the Crown Plaza on May 4th.
All right. Thank you, Alex. Does anyone else have a report to give? Diane?
Yeah, last Friday, April 19th, the Rhode Island Association of School Committees sponsored with the Attorney General's Office, an information topic and it was a Zoom meeting. And the topic was the Access to Public Records Act and the Open Meetings Act. And it was kind of an overview and pitfalls that school committees need to be careful on observing each of the acts. And they intimated, but they didn't give any details that, that this legislative session, that they may be tweaking the Open Meetings Act. So we'll need to keep an eye on that.
Any other school committee reports to give? Okay, thank you. We're on to the student report. Maya?
Okay, so last week during April vacation, I was lucky enough to travel to Peru with some of my fellow students, a current teacher at the high school and then a past teacher at the high school. And I just want to say beforehand that I can talk about this trip for probably hours, so I'll try to go as briefly as possible. And I might even get a little emotional because this was the most amazing trip of my life. I'm lucky enough to get to travel a lot with my family, just the four of us. But getting to travel with your fellow students and teachers is an experience like no other. And to my understanding, this was the last trip, uh, trip for the high school unless a teacher wants to take it on for themselves. Because we, the school no longer does school affiliated trips. The two teachers that took us on this trip had to do it within their own hands. They had to set it up themselves. It was not affiliated with the school. And I just want to bring back up the topic of making the trips school affiliated again because those of us that went on the trips were, it was a very closed off trip. The teachers, I don't want to say handpicked us, but we had to have known them personally. It was not open to as many students that wanted to go because it was no longer school affiliated. There was only 22 of us where in past trips there have been 40, 45. And some could say that's better, some can say that's worse because not as many kids that wanted to go could go. But I want to talk about bringing these trips back because it was the most amazing experience of my life. We traveled to Peru and we saw so many things. We saw Machu Picchu, which is one of the seven wonders of the world. But in my opinion, that's not even the most amazing thing we saw. We saw so much culture and so many things that we could connect to what we learned in classes. It was just actually like mind blowing. I don't know how else to put it. And it was so amazing that I got to travel with my fellow students and my friends. And I caught myself hanging out with kids that I wouldn't catch myself hanging out with usually. So new bonds were formed. And I just don't know what else to say except this trip is amazing and every student should get to go on it. It was, we got to try new foods. We got to interact with the, the Peruvians that lived there. We had to put ourselves in uncomfortable situations where we had We had to put ourselves in uncomfortable situations where we had to communicate with people that spoke an entirely different language than us and we had to figure it out ourselves. It was just so amazing. And I think that we should seriously bring these trips back because every student should get to experience this if they want to. And for those of you that don't have a pack and in front of you, I added many, many pictures of me and my friends because I can't show off this trip enough. It was so amazing. There's ones of us in front of Machu Picchu and just in front of incredible mountain views, us in the cities, in the little streets, interacting with just animals on the side of the road. There's just, there was alpacas just like standing on the side of the road that you could go up there and pet. And it was so, so crazy. It was nothing like I've ever experienced before. And the company that we went through and apparently have been going through for even the school affiliated trips was so helpful. There was multiple little kinks in the road that the company helped us through immediately. So really, the whole trip ran completely smooth. I just, we need to bring them back. That's all I have to say. They were, it was so amazing. And I, nothing like that, nothing will ever compare. There will be no experience like that that I'll ever get. Studying abroad in college is different than this. And it was such perfectly timed, right for seniors, it was perfectly timed where we, so much going on with our lives with deciding where we want to go to college and our senior projects and this and this and that. It was perfectly timed as a little break for all of us. And it was so amazing. And I just hope that everyone that wants to experience this gets to experience it.
Great, thank you. Pete, can you clarify a little bit about field trips? So are we canceling all field trips? What's happening here? Because I know this year, like our FFA goes to the national convention. We just heard the band kids went to Disney. The robotics kids are traveling. What's happening? Do you want to clarify for everybody?
They are, you know, certainly not canceled forever. So if the committee recalls, there was some incidents on a trip a couple of years ago, right? And so we did put a pause to that. You know, I know-
On a European trip?
On European trips, correct. And I know Mr. Fiore is kind of looking at it right now. You know, the students took advantage of a trip being sponsored outside of school by a tour company with teacher chaperones. And that may be a model that continues. We're looking at it. And I know Mr. Fiore is kind of speaking with his faculty and has been consulting with me. And we are consulting with our legal counsel around the level of liability that would be upon the district should the trips be reinstated. You know, unfortunately, the, because of the level of disruption of trips in the past, we did have to take a pause on those, but they may continue in the future. And again, Mr. Fiore is working on that with his staff.
But what's, what is your vision for within the country? Like, do you envision that the kids will still go on the FFA trip?
Oh, yes.
The band trip?
Absolutely. So we've had, you know, really good success on those co-curricular trips that have been very well planned. So the, for example, the band was on their Florida trip over the most recent April break. Highly successful, well-supervised, lots of participation, you know, really enthused. They got to perform in a number of venues, really a great experience. Again, as you all know, our FFA students continue to kind of excel at nationals when they go out to Indiana. And again, very well structured, very well planned, very well supervised. And those are really the criteria that we're looking for going forward. You know, international is a whole nother level of both need for supervision, risk and expense for families. And so that's something that I would recommend that the committee look at very carefully before jumping back in. And again, there is kind of a level of liability for the committee that the committee needs to consider before jumping into that. But again, we'll work with counsel on that to come up with a recommendation.
Great, thank you for clarifying that.
I just want to say thank you for sharing your experiences here and these very vibrant photos. I was like really blown away by the views and really the cultural immersion that you all experienced. And I too can relate to just how special a class trip was at the end of my senior year. I had the honor of going to Italy and it was really a trip of a lifetime. And it's like that last hurrah after growing up with these kids, your peers for like 12, 13 years. So I totally get the emotional, the emotion behind this kind of a trip. And just really thank you for advocating.
Maya, was one of the new foods that you tried Guinea pig?
I wanted to try Guinea pig so bad. I went and I was like, I'm trying Guinea pig. I'll, well, literally anything. But unfortunately, none of the restaurants that I went to had Guinea pig. But one of the kids on the trip got to try it. I tried alpaca. So it honestly was not that good. But I still get to say I tried it, so like, it's okay.
All right, thank you. All right, so moving on to the superintendent's report.
So you've had a lot of reports today, so I'll keep it super brief. So just really two things. So one, I just want to both call attention to and thank those working on it for the Beach Blanket bidding that is coming up on May 24th. And so the school community will see communication coming out from that committee, inviting people to it, to buy tickets and asking for donations. That's a major, major fundraiser for our PTOs. It's a huge amount of work that goes into that. So we're grateful to the amount of effort that goes into it and the support of the community. And so that will be coming to everyone's inboxes soon. Two, we are working on Portrait of a Graduate. And so that is a really important step forward for the school system. That's where we really look at what are the knowledge and skills and habits of mind that we want our students to have when they graduate. So we have a community committee coming in to meet with us a couple of times in May. And we'll start to get a draft of that going forward. So that is a really important part of what we're doing. And then finally, in the budget lens, the budget continues to move forward on the town side. And so we are working closely with the town manager to kind of shepherd the budget forward. And they've been supportive and in close touch with me kind of as those move forward. We did have a slight additional cut to our aid from the state due to our spring enrollment. So we did have a cut of around, a further cut of around $20,000. And so we may have to come back to a, come back to the budget if we have to make any adjustments based on the town and the state cuts, but we're not there yet.
Any questions for Dr. Cummings? All right, thank you. So we are moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve Consent Agenda Item CA 1B, CA 2A, CA 2B, and CA 2C?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Onto the budget report. Karen?
Good evening. Expenses for the nine months ended March 31st. Total $23,118,724. And that's 63.77% of our budget. Our expenditures and encumbrances for the same period totaled $32,128,202. And that's 88.61% of our budget.
Thank you. Any questions for Karen? Thank you. All right, school committee business. Item number one, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the purchase of Power School Naviance licensing implementation and training in the amount of $23,739.50?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
I'd like to invite Chris up just to say a couple of words about Power School Naviance. This is a program that is related to our students' college choices. And kind of, so I'll let Chris say a few mouthfuls.
Thank you. We currently use Zello and Naviance is basically the same type of system, only it's extremely expanded. So it offers a lot more than Zello does. And it, it works to really personalize the experience for students, families, staff and educators. It, it's billed as a college career and life readiness platform. So it really does start to encompass all of those ideas. And it aims to increase articulation amongst all constituents. So for students, for example, there's a bunch of tasks that they can complete that allows them to view their strengths, their interests, their personality type, their learning type, work-based learning opportunities, career interests, college obvious planning. And then there's an SEL component as well, which is hooked up with CASL, which is part of what Ruler is based on, which we've adopted. And we've gone through this year, the first year of Ruler Training. And that's only going to expand next year. For parents, it allows them to stay informed of their students' progress so they can start to seek connections and they can be involved in the college and career and life readiness planning. For teachers, they have the opportunity to make a lot of their lessons relate to life. Again, social-emotional learning connections, there's financial aid opportunities on there and lessons on there. It also allows them to have students look at interpersonal skills and building some of those interpersonal skills, which is really a need for our students to be able to master before they move on, you know, to post-secondary opportunities. The counselors, again, it was a little bit more typical, right? In terms of planning for post-secondary options. But again, it's with the new graduation requirements in the state of Rhode Island that begin next year with our freshman class, it's going to be even more important for each person to have a plan and for that plan to be trackable, so to speak, so that people can see the courses that they've taken, the areas that they've completed, and making sure that everything is ready for them to graduate. And, and that's a big component of this as well. But, and then counselors can also assess student outcomes as well. And then for administrators, there's a ton of reports that are available. We can aggregate data different ways and make it more accessible for what our needs are. And then just from an overall effectiveness standpoint, this is just, this is like the gold star. And that's obviously what we want to provide for our students and families. It ensures that, that all students will have equal access to, to high-quality resources.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Chris?
Just, is this brand new? Is this a brand new program? Have I ever used this before in the past? Because I kind of recognize Power School here.
Yes, so Power School is our overall student data system, right? So this is a modular Power School. Power School kind of takes over everything. So Naviance has been around forever. And so, you know, at least 25, 30 years. And Naviance, my own children used Naviance when they were going through the college application process. It's highly user-friendly. It really involves, allows parents to be involved in the selection process. It provides options around schools that you might not be familiar with. So for example, for both of my daughters, kind of using this program, they were exposed to opportunities they might not otherwise have been exposed to because it really does have a full national search and reach. And it also makes it way easier, just in a practical way, for submitting recommendations, getting applications off to schools in a timely way. It's well-aligned with the Common App. So we have a similar program through Zello. This one is probably better fits what our needs are as a school and will help our programs to grow with it.
Excellent, thank you.
I noticed that it's also for the middle school. So how, how far down does it dip? And does it follow the student all the way through?
Yeah, it'll, it's going to encompass the middle school as well. And honestly, you can do Naviance for elementary school as well if you, if you really wanted to. So it could be, it could be a K-12 system if, if that's what you're looking for. You know, I'm not sure that that's our need at this particular point, but it does tailor the activities that students can do to grade level. So like, for example, you know, seventh and eighth graders would be doing different activities, but sort of along the same lines of self-discovery and, you know, seeing how things work and being able to make connections between learning and, you know, their strengths and ideas and things like that.
And is it, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is it self-paced or is it teacher-guided?
No, self-paced.
Self-paced.
Yep. It's also going to be a big part of our Mariner classes as well. So it's going to be factored in. And it, so it's not something that we're just going to get and say, well, it's there if you want it. And if you don't want to use it, you don't use it. It's, it's going to be something, and it's sort of, I'm trying to keep it short. So I've given you Cliff Notes version. But the bigger picture is, you know, I've listened to parents, community members, students through a whole bunch of different platforms all year. And, you know, one of the things that I've looked at in terms of our needs is sort of a rebranding in certain areas. And, and one of those is the counseling center. And not for any, you know, fault of the counselors. It's just, I think the way in which we conduct business and do things can be a little bit more effective. And, and they've agreed and I've had them on board along with that. And this is part of that whole process of sort of like taking that and, you know, bringing us to the next level.
We are also required to have individual learning plans for students through middle school and high school. So this will help integrate that process.
Any other questions for Pete or Chris?
I do, I have a question. So will this allow more conversation with the counselors? Or is this so self-paced where the families and the students are going to feel like they're just being asked to go to use Power School? I do feel like, you know, education in general, especially helping to guide and lead families and students, there's really a lot of electronic types of apps that everybody's on, which I, I think that when you're making life decisions like this or when you're tracking a checklist like this, it has to be personable as well. So is this helping to free up time? Is this going to take more time from the counselors? Is it such a better system from the old one that we're going to see, like you said, it was going to be more, not effective, I forgot the word you used. But like, can you just explain like how you see that changing the process to enhance it for the students and families?
I'm hoping that, again, the increased articulation that I, that I mentioned is what comes to life. And that's what people are going to see. It's going to increase the discussion. So it might be something that's personalized for each individual, but it's going to increase the discussions that we have as groups. It would be increased discussions that I have with parents when I talk to them, that when I talk to students, when counselors talk to students, teachers talk to students. So everything is going to be incorporated into that. And it just gives everybody a little bit more information and a little bit more data. And then we can, you know, do more planning, we could do more educating, we could do the whole, the whole bit just seems to get better.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. Onto business item number two. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the school committee meeting schedule for the 24-25 school year?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? I have a conflict with the first date. For the, for the July workshop, I'm going to the National Principals Conference. That's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday that week. Other than that, the whole month of July, I'm free. But those three days, like that date, I can't do.
So again, we could certainly move that earlier or to a different date. You know, whatever the committee would like to do.
Can you tell us what you envision for the workshop that night?
So what we've done in the past, and what I would suggest again, is that's a time to kind of look at the data from the year. While we won't have everything, we will have most of our pieces. So it's a time for the committee to kind of look at the results and outcomes from the year, to kind of help set goals for the coming year, and to do a little professional learning. And so what we would be doing is looking both at the results and outcomes, at the new secondary regulations and what that means for us, and also have some input on the Portrait of a Graduate that will be coming forward.
I mean, I would really like to attend if the committee is okay with changing the date. So I don't know if people have an idea with their calendars or what we can do is we can try to kind of come up with a tentative date for July and then we can finalize it next month. But off the top of people's heads, if we stick with the Wednesdays, the Wednesday before is July 10th, the Wednesday after is July 24th. Does anyone know that they have a conflict with if we stuck with Wednesdays?
I think July 10th would be my preference.
I think we have to be careful of that week.
Oh.
No, I just, I, I think that it's, it's the busiest week in the town and-
Okay, July 24th.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying.
No, I think you're right.
Yeah.
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 Yes.
That's a great point.
July 24th is, so the blessing is the 26th, I think, this year. And so that's also a very busy week. And so, the, you know, if you wanted to do July 10, again, that is, it's after the Fourth of July. It is kind of, you know, again, you don't have to do it on a Wednesday. You can do whatever day you wish, because it's a workshop. And so if you wanted to do it, you know, earlier, I would ask that we probably don't do it any sooner than July 10th, just to give time for all the data to be collated and kind of all those pieces.
Are you away on that Monday of that week? Are you away that whole week?
I'm at the conference the 15th, 16th, 17th. Then the rest of the whole month, I'm free.
What about the 18th?
I can do that.
Thursday, 18th?
Sure, Thursday, 18th.
I think that's a good week, if you can do that.
Yeah.
Awesome.
What time of day with people that work late? What's the earliest you could start and can we have dinner? What's the earliest you guys would like to start? Because I can do any time on Thursday, 18th.
Oh, in July? I mean, 5:30 would probably be preferable.
Do you want to do 6:00 or 5:30?
I mean, I'll drive fast.
Well, you're going to get stuck in beach traffic and all that.
Oh, shit, yeah, you're right.
Well, I mean, not so much, you know, whatever. Do you want to do 6:00?
6:00 would be better.
Yeah.
You can have dinner at 5:30 without me.
No.
Yes, 6:00 would be better.
So 6 o'clock on Thursday, July 18th, everyone's okay with that? Thank you for shifting that for me. And then other than that, it's really kind of just sticking to the third Wednesday of every month unless there's a school vacation week. So, looking pretty good for people, at least four, between now and November. Okay. All right. So there's a motion on the floor to accept the slightly revised school committee meeting schedule. And we have a motion, it's been moved. Any more discussions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. The next is a discussion of a school committee resolution that we want to hear for the school committee supports us moving forward with that regarding healthy school meals. So Pete, if you can kind of give a soundbite about what the resolution is, and then if there's consensus among us, then Alex and I will sign off on it, and it'll be submitted on behalf of the full committee. So, can you give us a soundbite? We have it in front of us, we've read it, but just a little soundbite.
And this is a request from the Wellness Committee. And so this is a resolution supporting the proposed legislation at the Rhode Island State Legislature to provide free school meals for all students, very similar to what we had during COVID. And so that would be free breakfast and free lunch for all students. That's currently a bill in both the House and the Senate, has not yet been voted upon. So the Wellness Committee is in favor of this and has recommended that this resolution be passed on to the school committee for consideration.
So is that irregardless of a family's ability to pay?
Correct. It would be universal free lunch.
And breakfast too?
And breakfast too, yes.
And that this is also not something that we specifically are voting on, you know, that's a little bit out of our realm of power, but this is a resolution which is just a recommendation showing our support to the state.
Correct. And so that is something at the, you know, Rhode Island State Legislature, both the House and the Senate are considering. There are bills before committee that include this idea. And so, again, and from the Wellness Committee, there's lots of data that does support the benefits of that for healthy eating for all students, and so they are in favor of that.
So, has there been any projection of cost to the state?
So I don't know how many exact millions, but, you know, again, I do know that the major opposition to it at the state level is the projected cost over time.
So the information here is just what we currently do right now, which, as a parent, I have to tell you, you put everything on automated pay and software only works so well. Oh, 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 oh.
And again, I think the first step is whether towns and school committees are interested in the concept. The funding is a whole different thing, whether that would have to be totally encouraged by the state, whether there would be federal funding available to partner with it. It's not going to be a district expense, but when it was in place during COVID, you know, in the school that I work at, it was great just because their, you know, families were struggling, and anybody could just go up and get their very healthy, balanced breakfast or lunch, and people didn't have to worry about, "Do I have money left in my account?" And, you know, they're kids, so everyone was taken care of. Families are struggling, and they may not meet that low economic threshold where they qualify for free reduced, but still coming up with, you know, $2.50, $3 times five, times three or four kids, it's a lot. So, you know, I support the resolution of the, the concept of the resolution to move forward. I think the, our state reps need to hear from cities and towns if they're interested in the concept of it, if they think this is going to be, you know, good and meaningful and helpful and the right thing to do from an equity lens and everything. And the funding is going to be a whole nother piece that they're going to have to figure out in the state level or federal level. But we just kind of have to decide if we support the concept of it enough to sign a resolution from our committee. So are, what are people's thoughts? Are they comfortable with us kind of having consensus and submitting the resolution? Are people uncomfortable? What are your thoughts?
I'm comfortable submitting this resolution. I think this is a, like, we had a lot of this talk during COVID about potentially keeping that program on, so seeing the state try to pick that up, and especially if they're able to pick up some of the costs on that, would be vague financial for the school committee and for the schools.
All right. How about everybody else?
I mean, I applaud the Rhode Island's Healthy Schools Coalition's initiative here. I know this has been a battle for quite some time to get this through at the state. And, you know, I understand that times are extremely tough for families, and this is one way that we can really encourage this equitable access to a healthy meal. And if this is just one way of showing our support, then, you know, I'm all in favor for it.
I mean, yeah, I, obviously, during COVID was, you know, obviously, I think, a hard time for families. I think it's very important that, you know, the whole child is being supported during the school day. I think that comes down to nourishment. I do think that we have families in the community that this would be a huge, helpful thing to where they just won't have to think about breakfast and lunch. So, I mean, I don't see any reason not to support it.
Diane, did you want to comment? Are you comfortable with us doing the resolution?
Yeah, I'm not really strongly in favor of it, but, because of the economic aspect of it, the Rhode Island debt clock today for every individual in the state, the debt is, that we carry is $12,371. I don't think we should be adding to that debt, but I do understand the concerns that have been mentioned.
All right, well, thank you. So again, it's a resolution that it sounds like we have consensus from most of us that we'll move forward with submitting the resolution.
Great.
Okay. All right. We are moving on to item number four, which is a voting item, because this is a policy. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the second reading of the meal charge standard procedures?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
So, just because we do, I do use this, this doesn't operate how it, how it should. That probably doesn't matter, because this is the vendor that we use, and it's just how it is, right? I'm assuming? Yes.
Yes. So, again, you know, we, so this is the overall broad policy, right? And so it is designed to be how we want it to be operating. And so if there are implementation issues in current practice, this policy helps us solve them, because it says, "Here's the way it should be working, help us get to that place," rather than if it is not working in the way that it should, we then have the policy language to say, "We really have to get this done." It is kind of our policy goal.
I'd also add that this is a new policy. It's kind of like a more, you know, I think the goal was to kind of tighten up the language so that we could better enforce the policy. And this is just one way in which we're trying to lower the amount of debt that families and students accrue from the meals. And, you know, just special thanks to the Health and Wellness Committee and the policy committees for the hard work and looking this over.
And Pete, since we did the first read last month, any significant changes in the language of the wording?
No.
Looks pretty much the same from last month.
Correct.
Yeah, that was my exact question as well.
Yep. No, no changes. There was no, based on our first discussion, there was no recommendations in the committee of things they wanted to see differently, and so we left it the same.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this policy before we vote?
I do, I just want to point something out. So, though the school might think that they are communicative with things like this, especially in the beginning of the year, I'm specifically referring to sending out information on submitting the forms for free and reduced hot lunch. It's not with the world that we live in, it's not getting to the parents, to where they are, like, this should be part of the transition packet, so that kids and families that need this, single moms, single dads, grandparents that are raising grandkids, that they understand what they're signing and they understand, like, how to go about these processes. I can't speak more above, yes, I understand having a policy and everything like that. I just think it's really, really, really important that we increase our communication to families in that, I mean, even our website needs to be updated. You know, this should be really extremely accessible, and it shouldn't just be a form that goes out with everything else that the students have in the beginning of the year. This, this is, this is important. There are some things that aren't important, as important. This is very important, and I just want to make sure that while we're looking at this, we really follow up with everything. I've never, I can tell you, my kids, I get an email all of the time, I call, I send an email back saying, "This is my, this is my child." I automatically deduct, "Oh, that's not working, blah, blah, blah." I just think it's going to cause, you just have to think, you got to really think through with it and, and be on top of this. It's, I understand there needs to be a policy. I was not here last month to even talk about it or to make changes on it, but especially with the free and reduced applications, I know you guys talked about that last year, it affects our funding. You need to be more transparent. It can't go through a text, it can't go through an email, it has to be your talking with the parents in making it transparent.
What do you, what do you mean by that? What's not transparent about?
There's, there's so much communication and there's not enough educating, especially for the students and families that need assistance. They are trying so hard to keep up housing in this town, they're trying so hard to work three jobs in order to keep their kids in this town, in order to have good schools, that they're, they're, they're missing it if you're putting this in the second grades folder. I mean, I'm on the school committee and I'm missing it, yeah.
What I will say is that that's not how it works, right? And so part of the challenge of the free and reduced regulations is that it is confidential. And so, you know, we do have a school social worker that does a lot of work in this area. We very specifically reach out to families that have accessed this program before confidentially. We also take recommendations from school principal, from lunch, we look at our lunch data. We do reach out to families individually, just because we're not publishing that reach out, right? Again, we are restricted by the confidentiality aspects of this, and understandably so for a lot of families. And so I appreciate the, the passion around making sure that we get all eligible families enrolled, and I could not agree more that we need to do that. And we're always open to suggestions on how to do it better. But I would also suggest that just because you are not in a place where you are seeing it personally doesn't mean that it's not happening.
Well, I mean, I do have to say, and I understand what you're saying, but I am going to say that one of my frustrations as a parent on the school committee is that I hear from a lot of other parents on the school committee, because it's, I mean, in the schools, because it's very hard to get up in a meeting and to talk and say something about the school. I work personally with families, specifically in the bakery, and I do know a lot of families that do need assistance, and they aren't educated enough. That's, that, so my whole, my whole point is just to use this as an example of better educating, not breaching confidentiality, but reaching out more within the school, maybe however many times a social worker works with a student, or whatever it might be, to be more hands-on, because I do think that you will see the increase in number of these forms being filled out, hence we will get more aid, all of that kind of thing. I do feel passionate about this. I mean, to think that there, there are literally students that are starving in our town. And being a parent, I see them. So, that's just, I know we kind of got on a side conversation, but we have to be very diligent then about really making these phone calls and really being transparent.
So just to circle back to September, so, is it fair to assume that if somebody wants to find the free and reduced application, they can call the office at every school, right?
Correct.
Paper copies probably going home in the backpack with the little kids? And then is a link sent electronically, like in newsletters or, so like, are there like three ways to get it? You can call the office at your school?
All of those.
You can get a hard copy in your backpack, or you can click on a link in a listserv message or a newsletter?
All of those things are true. And, you know, one of the things that we also recognize is that poverty is really complex, right? And, you know, one of the things that we are really conscious of is that we have some families that seek assistance and some families that are, need assistance and don't seek it, right? And so one of the things that we try to do is to work with both our school social worker, our teachers, our school administration, to really reach out to families and get them to fill them out. We also use the run, the debt portion of this to make sure that if a family is running up debt, you know, one of the ways that we kind of reach out to them is to say, "Hey, listen, you know, you're running up a lunch debt here, there are programs that can help you with this," right? And so no child ever comes to school and is not fed. That's part of our policy. And so, you know, children are always, come first, children always get a lunch, even if they don't have the money to pay for it. But for us, that is an alarm bell that says, if a child, everyone forgets their lunch money every once in a while, right? That happens. But if we have a child who is consistently not able to access food, and they are hungry and they don't have a lunch, we have a great staff. They notice that if a kid doesn't have a lunch, they send them up to get food, right? And so we really do reach out to all of them. So if there are families that, you know, are not accessing this program, we try to reach out to them. If we are not kind of meeting the need of reaching out to them, we're always open to suggestion on how to do that better. But we certainly are applying the resources that we have, and we do regularly look to other districts, to other parts of the country, to see what methodologies are being used in a more successful way. So, for example, you know, over the past couple of years, the federal government was finally allowing us to do online applications. For a long time, it had to be paper, right? And so we jumped right on that and was able to do it. One of the reasons that the universal free lunch is really effective is that it enrolls everybody, but we do have students that are automatically enrolled if they're, you know, on SNAP or other benefits from the government. And so, you know, again, we access those students. We know if a family was taking advantage of this program in the past, we reach out to them if we haven't gotten their paperwork. And if they do fill out their paperwork and they have run up some lunch And if they do fill out their paperwork and they have run up some lunch debt, we are able to forgive that debt because, again, they've enrolled in the program. Now, that's a cost to the district, right? But again, we'd rather get them into the program that they need. So we are doing quite a bit, always open to suggestion on how to do it better. Uh, but, you know, that is certainly a major part of our school social workers' work is supporting families that are in need.
So students are not turned away? If they're at the register with their hot lunch, and the cashier is checking them out and they have a balance, are they turned away?
They are not. They get to, uh, have their lunch.
Okay. So let's circle back to the language in the policy. Any other questions or comments about the language in the policy before we take our vote?
Just one more question for Peter before we move to that. Uh, there was quite a scandal, I think, in the LA school system about withholding diplomas because of school lunch debt. We do not do that as well.
We do not.
All right. Thank you.
Right. Any other questions or comments about the policy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right. Motion passes five zero. Okay, we are on to business item number five. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent and the Director of Finance and Administration to approve the purchase of two Dell Power Edge R760 servers from SHI, the amount of $35,281.20?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Good evening. Um, this purchase was something that was discussed, um, at our District Technology Committee meeting that if we had leftover funds for this year, um, this was going to be one of the purchases we targeted. So this would be for two, um, Power Edge servers and this would replace our production environment server. So our production environment currently has two servers with no storage. They just run our virtual, um, software on it. Then we have a separate SAN, which is all of the storage for the network, plus two switches that communicate between the two. This is kind of, this was the standard, um, you know, seven, eight years ago. But since so much has moved to the cloud, um, the standard has now become server with the storage in it so that it's not separated and you're not buying multiple devices. So this would replace our current two production servers that are about seven years old and the SAN that we purchased with the two Dell switches about eight years ago. Um, this will also help us in the future as well because we had earmarked in one more year, um, as part of the capital improvement plan, to replace the SAN. So we can take that out in future capital plan because this will actually, this will, the server with the storage will do this. Um, like always, we usually look at Dell, which is on the master price agreement. But with certain peripherals, um, like projector servers, Dell actually offers better pricing through a reseller who has a national contract. Um, and in this instance, it was through SHI. Um, going through SHI saved about, um, an additional $3,700, which was about 10% of the overall cost. Um, so I'm recommending purchasing these two servers. Um, hopefully getting them in by the end of May so that we can do our transition, um, in, during the summer. Happy to answer any questions.
So the information still goes to the cloud?
No, so some of our, some of our servers have gone to the cloud. Originally, we had, when we had the SAN, probably about six years ago, we were running about 45 virtual servers on these two servers. Currently, we're at about 25. So some of our platforms have moved to the cloud, but we still have a lot on site. We have radius servers, print servers, DNS servers, DHCP servers. There's still, there's still local processing power and storage that you need to do. Everything can't be run from the cloud. Um, so that will do that. And by doing the two servers, it builds in the redundancy. So we have the redundancy with the two production servers. We have our replication that goes to the middle school. And then we also have our da- disaster recovery in Texas as well.
Thank you.
Julia, what's the warranty?
These come with, I believe it's in here, it's three, three or four years pro-support. Um, it is two years, yeah, three years pro-support. And usually after that time, we do a renewal for three years. So the SAN, for example, came with three years and we did two follow-ups of three years on that as well. Um, so they, they won't go longer than three years in your initial contract. But then after those, after that three-year term, you can re-up just the maintenance on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to, we have two contracts for tonight. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the 2024 through 2027 contract for the Director of Operations for the Narragansett School District, which will be effective July 1st, 2024?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Do I need to make a motion for number seven?
Yeah, table.
Do I do that before you?
Um, no, we have one that, that, this, this contract is not ready.
Okay.
So if someone would like to make a motion to table the contract for the Transportation Supervisor until our next meeting?
Yes, I will make a motion to table agenda item number seven to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the 2024 to 2027 contract for Transportation Supervisor of the Narragansett School District, effective July 1st, 2024, to May's meeting.
Second. Any discussion?
So moved.
Oh, we're just gonna, oh, sorry.
So, so moved.
Alex moved it, yeah.
Second, okay.
There you go.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero to table that motion to next month. And we have one more voting item. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the 2024 through 2027 contract for the Narragansett Elementary School Principal, effective July 1st, 2024?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, are there any communications that anyone wants to mention? All right, wow, right on the dot. Is there a motion to adjourn at nine o'clock?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.